Hi, the board is back in open session. Welcome everyone, welcome Ames students and parents and staff. We'll get to you in one second, just have a couple of things to get through here. So at this point, is there any public comment? If there's no public comment, then we go into the superintendent's report.
Wonderful, thanks. I'm going to go ahead as item one is talking about Ames, some student presenters that are here, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Gierman, the principal at Ames School.
Thank you. Good evening Superintendent Martha Ryan-Toy in District 96 Board of Education. I have some very excited and eager 5th grade students that are looking forward to sharing with you this evening how they integrate technology into their lessons at Ames Elementary School. And before I allow our students to introduce themselves to you, I want to introduce Mr. Ryan Bookler and Mrs. Amy Seymour, who are two 5th grade teachers over at Ames.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ryan.
I'm Xavier.
And I'm Savannah. Today, we're here to show you some of the cool things we are working on in 5th grade at Ames School.
Kids learn in many different ways, and we've found that technology is one of the ways to help us.
Back when our parents were kids, they would put their work into a folder. But today, we have a digital portfolio that we created with Mr. Smith and Ms. King.
And then here, Katie, you can go ahead Savannah, let me show you first.
Hi, my name is Savannah Marillo, and I'm an 11-year-old girl in 5th grade at Ames What I have here is where we keep all our projects and our portfolio, and there are videos and pictures that show us. We did a foam experiment. What we did to make it was, we first got these two ingredients called polymer A and B. We then mixed them together, and then they formed a gas, such as bubbles. At first, they were a liquid, and then lastly, they turned into a solid because the bubbles hardened.
So it had the three states of matter, they were able to see. And then what else do you have on your portfolio Savannah? What else, what other things do you keep up there?
We have, I also have math, reading, and social studies.
And in your math, what kinds of things do you have under there?
We have math notes and math videos.
Excellent, great job Savannah. Katie, a 5th grader at Ames, she couldn't make it tonight, but she did ask, "Oh, can you please show my portfolio?" And I, yes, absolutely, we'll make sure we do that. So Katie, this is similar to Savannah, she's got a portfolio as well. And the nice thing about having the portfolios is, we want kids and adults alike, we want to reflect on our learning. What did we learn? And this is a great platform to do that. So we've got photos and videos from the different science experiments that we've done here. This was an egg drop where the kids had to design a contraption. This was back in August, September. And they, we did a trial run. When they made their contraption, we put a hard-boiled egg in first, and they had to test it. And then they had to redesign if it didn't work right before they had the final test, which was with a regular egg. So the students are able to document that here, and then there's pictures and there's videos. And then here is the experiment that Savannah was talking about. Again, for the reading as well, the kids, for one of the novels from our Ready Gen curriculum, the kids took notes on the different character traits, and they would find evidence from the text if a character is, let's say, a bully. Well, you can't just say that, you have to prove that. So they were able to document that in their slideshows going throughout. And then when they would write their end products, their final papers, they could use the evidence that they collected. Maybe the character changed through the book, and they'd have to find evidence to do that. So this is an ongoing project. We also have, which Ryan is gonna get to in a minute, some Khan Academy-style videos. So go ahead and turn it over to Xavier.
Here in the 21st century...
Do you want to go with Seymour?
Xavier.
Here in the 21st century, we are using a program called Glockster. We are, we, where we can insert pictures, video links, recordings, and text. Here is a project that we've worked on, on for the topic of figurative language, which we will help make our writing more descriptive. Instead of jotting down a definition and memorizing it, we...
Well, let's take a look.
So I've been working on a proj, on a project, on a website called Glockster, and this project has to do with figurative language. So I've made three different videos of describing what figurative language means.
Figurative language is a type of language that is non-literal, and that for some people, when you use figurative language, it makes, it makes writing more entertaining.
Oh, the gate, please, I'm tired.
Oh my God, it's raining, I can't believe it. I'm gonna get stung.
And then the last video. Wait, how did I scroll down?
We were eating Doritos, and freaking out because of the storm.
Star-nosed mole, that's why.
And then I have two more figurative language examples. This one's an idiom, "The sun was smiling down at me." And a hyperbole is an exaggerated speech. "I'm so hungry that I can eat a horse."
Click on that, and the pictures come up. And your other one, go ahead and do that one.
Oh yeah, "I play basketball as good as Jason Taylor."
Cool. So Glockster.
So Glockster is a great way to do things to help our reading and writing.
Our parents and teachers only have markers and paper to use for book reports. Another thing that we've been working on is creating our own instructional videos.
Here's a video that Ryan put together on how to multiply decimals.
Multiplying decimals is easy. All you have to do is write multiplication, and then regroup. But the trick is, you have to move two, you have to move a decimal place two times to the left. Here's how. Let's do this one together. 2.5 times multiplied by 5.5. So you have to multiply 5 by 5, that equals 25, then 2 times 5, that equals 10, then you move the 2 to keep your answer positive. Yay, now you know multiplication. Try this one again.
And this is a great way for, for the kids, they can watch each other's videos, and using it for future classes as well. If someone is struggling, here, let's watch this video, similar to the Khan Academy videos.
This, this video and other math videos help us remember what to do when solving problems.
Ms. Seymour.
Another website that we use in my classroom a lot is called Flipgrid. So Flipgrid is a really good way for students to be able to make short videos to respond to certain things. So I've been using this for book reports, to do oral book reports instead of doing written book reports. And Ryan has let me say, you can add like gifs and stuff in it. So it's fun for them, and it has the requirements all listed there for you. So they each have their own code that they activate, hook through Google Classroom, and they click into our classroom. And this is only for our classrooms, so they're not putting videos out on the internet that other people can see and comment on. You know, we kind of have that talk about internet safety as well. So let me see if I can find, hmm, Ryan B. is here. Yep.
My name is Ryan, and the book I'd like to represent is Smile. Smile is a really good book by Rena Talmadge, my mother, I don't know how to pronounce it. But this book is about a girl named Rena, it's a memoir, and she has like dental problems in her teeth because she fell, and blood was everywhere, and she got, and then she had dents, and she hated having braces, but the...
Okay, I'm gonna stop it there. But all of the students can go on and comment on each other's videos, and it can only be a positive comment, right? You give each other a little like flames, and I can give them feedback as well, saying, "Hey, I really love this," or "Hey, you should probably think about adding this next time you do your video." And they've gotten progressively better as the year goes on, and it's just a fun alternative way to do book reports, so.
Xavier.
Thank you for allowing us to show you some of the cool things that we are doing at Ames.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bookler, Mrs. Seymour, and students. We appreciate all the wonderful things you shared with us this evening, and thank you, Board of Education, for hosting our students tonight.
No, thank you, that was really interesting, that presentation. You guys did a great job, very, very informative, very clear, very well done, yeah.
So is that something your parents get to see too? Like is that, I know it's only in the classroom, but is that something like on their Chromebooks that they could show their parents and...
They could show their parents if they choose to.
Yeah, that's great.
It's great for open house, where parents can look at other kids' work as well.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
Very nice, yeah, good job.
Teaching each other. If they're struggling, I like the idea that they can teach each other, and sometimes hearing it in a different way from a child your own age makes it click, which is really fun, so, good job.
Come a long way from the folders and markers.
My generation. I still like markers sometimes. Markers are cool.
You still use markers.
You got a color.
And then for the Glockster, the kids, they're gonna be paired with someone at a similar reading level, and they're gonna do a book report together, and they'll, they'll do one on like the characters, the character traits, the setting, and those types of things, because we want kids to be thinking when they're reading, because of course, you can read something and go, "What did I just read?" So this is another tool that they're gonna use to do that.
Great.
I have a question for the students. It really appeared like you guys enjoyed working together. Is that true? It is? All right, good.
Savannah goes, "Yeah."
Okay, good, good. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Great job, guys. We'll continue on with a few other superintendent report items. The other thing I wanted to share with the board, and also just share publicly, is the revised calendar. So we have had three weather-related emergency days, so we have added three days that, as they are proposed, at the tail end of our school calendar. So that's revised, that's also available on our website, and wanted to make sure people were aware of that change. One thing that's also important to point out is our 8th grade graduation date though is not changing. So we really do lock in that date, we know families lock in that date with extended family perhaps. We use Riverside Brookfield High School, we share that Riverside Brookfield High School dates with Comarck and Brookfield 95 also. So I won't say 8th graders get lucky this year, I'll say that our 8th grade team will make sure that all 8th graders have covered and addressed the material that they need to, make sure they've addressed before the, their end of the school year, which is a little bit earlier than everybody else's, so. We also have kindergarten registration night, hard to believe, but that's coming up on March 7th, and it really is so important to us, and really is valuable to us as a school district, that families who have children that are going to be entering kindergarten for the coming year come and complete registration enrollment as early as possible, is, the more prediction we can have around our enrollment is just very helpful for class size and school placements, et cetera. So that is coming up very, very soon.
Cut-off date for getting the discount on the enrollment fees, do you remember?
Does it say it on here? April 30th, to receive the discount. Yes, read the flyer.
So you get a $30 discount if you register by before that date, is that correct?
Yeah, $30 discount.
Register by April 30th, you receive a $30 discount.
Yeah, and it really is valuable, as the board knows, to have that information as much in advance as possible. So that will be coming up very soon, I can't believe March is just around the corner. And then the other thing I wanted to share, and I know we're gonna talk more about long-range financial projections, et cetera, but the Facilities Advisory Committee met last week and came up with a series of recommendations. One is certainly that the five-year financial projections are shared with the board at tonight's meeting, and for us to really begin to come to consensus around financial direction for these projects, that we would update the analysis of the square foot per student at the four elementary schools, looking at it with the proposed concept design addition ideas. Though we'd also hire a security consultant to look at the secured front office configurations at Central School, that we know that there were two, two different options that were discussed here at the board table, and felt by having an objective consultant to help us examine that would be an important next step in the process. And that also, we agreed to do an additional walkthrough with DLA at Blythe Park Central and Hollywood Schools, as we begin to think about these design ideas, which we have been now for some time, just making sure that all the questions that the board has asked, questions that have really been posed to us by the community can be thought through, and making sure we're being responsive to all of those considerations. We also have our interviews set up with three firms that are proposing ways to look at the separation of play and parking for the Hauser Central campus, and those interviews are set up, Jim, for...
The 4th.
Thank you, Joel, March 4th. Joel's gonna be joining us for those. And then looking at our next Facility Advisory Committee meeting, which we wanted to get the walkthroughs on the calendar before we would convene again, and we actually just got those set up for March 8th, set those up today. So I know there's probably more discussion, potential questions, I don't know if people want to wait until the financial considerations portion, or if anybody has questions for me, or for Richard, Linda, who've been part of obviously the ongoing Facilities Advisory Committee work.
If not, and there are no questions at this point, then next we move on to the, thanks Martha, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. So at this point, would the Board Secretary like to read the consent agenda?
Sure. Tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of the previous meetings, which is the closed session of January 16th, the regular business meeting of January 16th, and the committee of the whole on February 6th, the personnel report, and the payables pre-lists from January 31st and February 20th. There is also an employee recognition event at the end of this school year, and the employee wellness screening.
Thanks Joel. At this point, is there any item on the consent agenda that any board member would like taken off for further discussion?
I'd like the employee recognition event. Item number five pulled out.
Okay. Any other items?
The minutes from February 6th.
Minutes from February 6th. Okay, that's 1C, okay. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of item 5, the employee recognition event, and the item 1C, which is the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting on February 6th?
So moved.
Second.
Martha, please go to the roll.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks Margie. So item number 5, recognition dinner, Rich, you had some comments about that, or?
I, I just think it's important to separate this, just so it sort of gets its own individual vote. You know, nothing in particular here for me to note, other than it would appear that the 1819 event is budgeted to come in, or cost us actually less than the 1718 event.
That's a good point. Any other comments on this item? If not, is there a motion to approve the employee recognition, recognition event for 2018, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Martha, please go to the roll.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks Margie. And Joel, you had a comment about the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting from February 6th?
Just in the page 3, the commentary about Central School, and it says that relocating the office downstairs to the garden slash basement level was suggested so as to not move students out of one of the most beautiful classrooms in the school. There's multiple reasons it was suggested to move that office downstairs, and I think it just, right now, it's implied that the only reason it's being suggested is for aesthetics.
Should we...
I like that accessibility that we discussed.
Right. Should we, do we have an agreement that other reasons were mentioned, that we should modify the minutes accordingly then? Okay, so it seems like there's consent then on the board to modify that, so we have accessibility, and what else did we have? The two, the two big two are accessibility and the, and the sort of overall quality of the, of the classroom for students, are the two main ones, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So what's the procedure now? Do Margie, do you modify the minutes and we come vote on next time, or do we just, okay, okay?
I'll modify it.
And that's, that's legitimate to do that, that we even though, there's always some timeline on these minutes, is there some window?
We're changing the minutes.
Yep.
But because you're making a change to them, we'll just, we'll modify them, and then you'll approve them next time.
Okay, all right, thanks Margie. Okay. All right, so the next item then is the Riverside Educational Council. Do we have any comments from the Riverside Educational Council? If not, we move on to board member comments. Does anyone have any, any comments about any events they attended, or anything that they would like to talk about, they saw, or participated in?
I attended recently not one, but two talent competitions at Hauser.
And without a doubt, there's a lot of talent in the school we're at here, and a lot of very talent, a lot of, trying to think, saw interpretive dance, saw a lot of piano playing, a lot of the moving the aperture up and down, then also choral performances, dramatic readings. It's, it's an impressive school we have here, we have very impressive students, very talented students.
Was that, anyone else have anything?
I didn't participate in it, but I heard, the 7th grader went to Springfield last week, and I heard nothing but great reviews from my 7th grader, so as a parent, it was a very, very well-communicated, very seamless, got messages during the day, and posts on Facebook showing us where they were, and so...
That's great.
It was a really, it was a really well-run field trip.
I couldn't go to this week, but my family's involved in the robotics competitions, and I just wanted to mention, we, in the last couple years, have kind of formed a new alliance with a smaller group of schools, and have taken turns hosting, and it's working really well. I, in my opinion, I think it's fun to have it hosted here, with some of you came, and so I think that's great, like we can participate in that, and instead of just having it as a giant statewide competition, it's been more functional, so.
And I'll just go ahead and plug one other thing, Hauser's in the middle of their food drive, and they have their Feed Our Community Day on March, Saturday, March 2nd, so if anybody in the community is interested in coming to pack food, there's a sign-up genius out there, you can sign up, and, yep.
Great. Anyone else have any? Sure. Then if not, we move on to the committee reports, finance, Rich?
We actually have a fairly important agenda item later on, so I think I'll save comments for that.
Education, Jerry, do you have any comments about?
Yeah, we have four different items.
Ms. Brownlow kind of educated us because Park is changing just a hair, so we got to hear what it's gonna be called, and minor changes, things like that. We heard about Institute Day for the teachers, and what they did, K-5 update, and then some updates about a data management system that will be deferred for a variety of reasons, so, thanks.
And on the policy, Dan, do you have any report on policy?
Policy committee remains in hibernation at the moment. Although perhaps with March coming, we'll see our shadow with a new press update.
Next item is old business. First item in old business is the summer school 2019. We talked about that last time at the committee of the whole, so at this point, is there a move, I move the Board of Education to approve the summer school 2019 as presented, is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion about the summer school memo? Or the summer school plan? If not, then Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks Margie. Next item is school fees. At last committee of the whole meeting, we talked about school fees. I believe that Mr. Fitten had proposed that we would raise fees by the rate of inflation with basically sort of a rounding, so that it wasn't a crazy number every year, you just wait until it, you know, moved up to the next five digits, I think, the fifth digits, is that correct?
It's the same as we talked about last meeting. We included a report with some research on comparable districts at Pampshoa that put together, so our proposals are right in the middle of everyone's.
And you're going to be doing some more analysis of the preschool fees for next year?
Yes, yeah, we'll start it a little earlier this coming year.
Ideally, right, we'd like to move all the fees to the annual approval at the same time, but it looks like we need to get more well ahead of the early learner's tuition because that gets communicated much earlier to families.
So at this point, is there a motion of Board of Education to approve the school fees as presented?
So moved.
Does anyone have any comments or thoughts about this fee schedule?
I think it's better that we tie it to inflation. I think it makes it a little bit more predictable that, yes, life does get more expensive as time goes by, and it also makes it easy to defend.
Right.
No, I would, I would agree along with Joel, I think it's good that we tie it to inflation. My only concern in reservation is that tie it to the rate of inflation and sort of using the $5 mark rounding up or down, the lower fees are never gonna go up.
I think he's, what he's doing is he's not, he's waiting until he hits that, every year, he actually calculates the, say, say it's $1 every year, after five years, it would hit the 105, I think, is kind of what he's doing, I think, if I understand it correctly.
I watched that meet, I did watch the board meeting, I might have missed that.
Something like that, I think that's the intention. Jim, can you describe your, your calculation of what you do? Let's say, let's say the fee's $100, and inflation is 1% for, for five years, how do you, how does it work?
Kind of behind, in the back of Excel, it would show, I would increase it each year by inflation, 1.9% this time, but it rounds to the nearest $5, so it keeps building behind, it seems, and sooner or later trips to the numbers.
Got it, okay. So, yeah, okay. Any other comments? Then if not, Margie, please go to the roll.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye, thanks Margie.
Motion carried.
Next item is the contract for the Vistara Construction Services. So Vistara is the company with Ramesh Neer that will be providing the oversight of the owner's rep services for the different construction projects. I noticed the contract is, has a number of specific items in it, so maybe it's better to defer this until we've talked about the actual scope of the spending that we want to, in the, in the sequence we want to do things in, till later in the, in the meeting, does that sound reasonable?
That's, I was gonna suggest the same thing. It's, we, I think, it feels like from previous conversations, we all have consensus on utilizing the efforts of someone like Ramesh, but I think we need to determine scope to make sure that this contract follows what our requests are.
I think that's true. Jeff shared with me some back and forth between Ramesh and the district, and by all indications, he, Vistara, is very flexible and very willing to adjust the scope of, to adjust his fee, excuse me, to fit the scope of the work. And that indicates a good, fair partner to work with, and...
Right.
Yeah.
Right, I agree. I think the contract, as I, as I understand it, is very fair, but it's contingent on what we decide to do exactly in the order we do it. So with that, we move on to the item J, which is the Village of Riverside's proposal to put a security camera relay on the, on our smokestack at Central Hauser. So at this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the security camera relay request from the Village of Riverside as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so is there any discussion on this, on this item?
At this time, I'm not sure, I feel like I have enough understanding of the scope of the village's larger-scale project to make a decision, so that's where I am at this point. I feel like I need more information, so.
I feel like I need more information, so.
Excuse me, I sort of agree with Sherry. I don't think there's enough information. I mean, but I guess the bigger thing, bigger issue for me is though, I understand we want to be partners and we have like a relationship with the, the village. However, the schools, in my opinion, is their business, their role is in education and we should be focused on education and I serve, and I feel that this, we've crossed the line in what our true mission is, that even though it technically is a, I guess, a small change or a small request, I do think it's, it could lead to further requests and I don't feel comfortable with, with this.
I, I definitely appreciate respect, Dave's comments there. I don't, I, I personally don't see this request as an overreach. I see it as being a good community partner. The questions that we have asked, they have answered and to my satisfaction, as I've received them, so, um, you know, I, I am going to be in support of this.
Are we just going around saying?
Yeah.
I'm in support of it. I, I agree with Rich. Yeah, I, I feel comfortable with it.
I, I'm in agreement as well. Uh, I, I think that this is not an overreach. It's not an actual camera, it's a camera relay. So that it's, it seems like it's in the spirit of good partnership and, and the overall wellness of the village. I, I don't see a reason to oppose this.
Honestly, I'm on the fence about it, but I think my on the fence is more of a question regarding just cameras in general.
It's like a philosophical thing.
It's a philosophical thing. I completely, and that is where I stand on it and I fully understand our desire to be a partner and that's why I'm not making an issue of it. Because I think that philosophical discussion is better held at the village level.
Yeah.
If we agree to this, whatever the vote comes out to be, would it make sense to sort of codify what we're, what we're agreeing to in the sense that we maybe give, have some kind of intergovernmental agreement, we're saying this thing is up there on a limited term that could be renewed annually or whatever and that it's, it's not going to be, it's a sort of well-defined relay, it's not going to be the first of, of other things, we're not going to have to chop down trees or anything else that can modify our own operations. Is that, would that make sense to be very, very clear about what we would be agreeing to if the Board so votes, you think?
I think that's a fair modification and I, I personally don't support an open-ended approval for whatever's requested, but I do think an annual review is appropriate.
No, I, I would, I mean, if this is something the Board wants to do, I would need to put, I would want something in place to codify that because, um, we, we had the issue, we had an issue like where they've come and done drills here before and I just, I felt uncomfortable with that and now we're playing up a relay, I guess what's the next step they're going to do? And so I would like this to be codified, that what they did say in here, that there would not be any disruption to schools, that if it does go down, that they will only maintain it after school hours, that, because my concern is that they'll say this is an emergency
and that we need access to it right away.
I'm not comfortable with giving them, I mean, complete access to that.
So we, the, sort of the motion then is to vote on this thing with, with, with these kind of codifications that we've sort of outlined here then?
Sure.
Is that okay? Is that everyone's agreeing with that? Um, so I guess I, I agree with, with the points that, that Joel made, that so this is, we are probably not the right forum for these philosophical discussions about whether we want to have closed-circuit TVs all around town and.
If I can interrupt you, Joe.
Yeah.
I do, I'm going to disagree with.
Well, I haven't quite finished because I agree with you as well. But I said, that said, I do agree with Dave Barsati's point, which is that it is, schools have a very particular mission, which is educating our students and that is our, really our sole mission and everything else that detracts from that, these conversations we have about these kinds of things, even though they seem totally innocuous, they do take up time, they take up attention, there's going to be, things are going to go down, someone's going to get a call. So I think from that point of view, I would agree with what Dave Barsati says, which is I would prefer the village to find another location for this. So that would be my complete comment.
Right. You know, and I, and I guess my, my thing is that this is becoming, I would, I would disagree, I guess, with Joel a little bit on this because I do think that while this is a discussion to be held at the village level, it is now a discussion that we have to have at the board level because they're asking us to enable them to put, to put a camera in. And so I do see that as an extension of that, we have to have that discussion. Because, and if we want to get into the philosophical debate of whether or not we should be supporting cameras in the village, I mean, that, that's, that's, that's a question I'm more than willing to debate, but.
Right. So that's certainly our, our role here now in this.
Right. But, but we are becoming sort of, we are, we are becoming, we are becoming like, I would say, we are enabling the village to put up cameras in, in the community.
Any other, any other comments or questions on this topic? So just to repeat the motion, the motion to approve the request for a relay to, on the, on the, on the smoke tower with, with the intergovernmental agreement codifications that we talked about. So with that motion then, Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Abstained.
Mr. Barsati?
Nay.
Mr. Marhol?
Abstained.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Well, we have three ayes, we have two nays and two abstains.
So I guess that's a no.
Do the abstains support?
Oh, the abstains support?
The abstains support the majority.
Ah, okay. I didn't know that. Good to know. Okay. Well, in that case, then, then it passes.
That's my interpretation of Robert's rules.
I guess we should double check Robert's rules before I go.
You need a strict majority, but.
In spite of my, with that, yes, I believe you're correct.
Abstains support the majority.
Districts, okay. So when there's, when there's, you don't need a, you don't need a majority or quorum vote on an, on an item, you just need a majority of votes plus the abstentions.
Correct.
Or you need, you need, okay, quorum, okay, got it.
That's my interpretation of Robert's rules on it.
I'll double check.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then the motion passes.
I would like to reiterate, I'm not abstaining for a certain vote. I am abstaining because I certainly, I just do not have the information that I need to make a decision, so.
All right. So.
You're right.
The next item then is, so just let us know if that, if it's.
Sure. It does not affect the voting as a whole.
If it's not one way or the other, I guess we should.
Yeah, I will let you know. And I'll let the village know depending on.
Which way this goes.
Okay. So then the next item we have is the discussion about the new business. So the, basically one big topic, which is the, the five and 10-year financial projection. So Rich, if you would like to, to lead that discussion, I may have been talking to Mr. Fitten about that.
I do and, you know, I guess I want to start off by saying Jim has done a really great job and I'm not sure all Board members have seen it previously. Um, you know, I feel like if you are watching the reports that are coming through, you're beginning to gain an appreciation of how good he is at this. Tonight, um, you know, the five-year financial projection that he prepared is another example of that. The detail that he's provided here, I think, provides this board a very clear and very important picture on what our finances are going to be without any projects that we're contemplating and then with projects that we're contemplating. So I'm going to invite Mr. Fitten to the microphone here just to walk us through exactly what he's prepared and then we can start our conversation after that.
My reports go at this really from the facilities angle. What I was going to start with here is the construction program budget that was created by Ramesh and he's, he works for Vistara. That's our owner's rep for the capital projects. And what he put together here is a program budget for $23 million. It's, can't really see the colors, but the third box says program budget and it's a little over $23 million. But that includes the $981,000 that was already spent this year to purchase the house at Loudon and the district office. And we have a couple of projects to finish up at Repton, the curb cut and the sewer line. So those are already committed for this year. And then the two big proposals or recommendations that came to the last couple of meetings for AIM School and some work at Blyce, Central, Hauser and Hollywood. One thing, so these are all in costs, of course, they're estimates at this point. It doesn't include a couple of projects where we still have placeholders that I kept in the financial projections, even though they haven't really evolved into making it onto the construction plans yet, so.
Can you recap what that is?
Yeah. So it's the separation of parking and play at Hollywood and at Central. So I have it, this is my version of, of what Ramesh also did, but the first column is this year and we'll spend 981, 100. And then if we were to follow those recommendations from the last couple of meetings and FY '20 or next year, we would spend 22,000,102 and so the cumulative amount, the 23,083 ties back to what he's got on his radar. Then I added the third column because, just to keep it in front of everybody, these other projects that came out of the long-range plan, that they're more placeholder numbers at this point. They haven't been as thoroughly looked at as the ones we're proposing for FY '20 and of course, the ones we've already completed. So there's a number down there in the yellow that over these three years, we would be spending, that I want to work into my five-year projections. And that 24,355, um, if we went along with all the, what was recommended by the Facility Committee, we have to come up with a way to fund that. In your report, there's a, one sheet that has a lot of numbers on it, so I just wanted to point out a few of the key numbers on this sheet. The green box at the top is where we started this year at with operating funds of 31.2 million, a debt service balance of 3.1 million, and there's already almost $2 million in capital project fund. So all our funds are 36.3 million, but it's the operating funds that we look at and, and see how many, what percentage we have. Over on the right, I just took the $2 million that we're starting with in capital projects that was there at the beginning of the year. And if we want to fund the 24 million from those other, from the last sheet, we would need to, and we want, if we want to pay for it all out of fund balance, we would need to transfer from operating over to the capital 22.4 million. So that would get our capital projects out and fully fund them, but of course, our operating funds would drop by almost the same amount. There's a few other calculations in there that look small compared to the capital projects. On the left side, I started with the 31.2 in operating funds and all the changes over the five years would reduce it by almost 21 million. And so at the end of 2024, five years out, we would only have 10.3 million in fund balance and that's about 33%. So we ended last year at 120% and so we could pay for a little more than a year of our expenditures. And if we do all the facilities, we're only using fund balance, we'll drop that down to So I'm trying to represent that in a, in a chart here. What you have up here is the first five years are in the books. That's his, that's actual, what happened at the end of last year with the audit that just came in. We're, we had 31.2 million dollars, that black number at the top, that's the peak. And then if we move the two and a half million over, we'll start dropping the operating balance and moving it over to capital, which moves it off this chart. Move a little bit this year and move quite a bit the next year. The blue line going across is 40% of our expenditures. You can see it slightly increases every year as our expenditures go up by inflation or a little more. So our fund balance policy is to always have 40% on hand and right now at 120%, we're more than adequate. If we were to only pay for these projects as they are out of the operating, move it to capital and spend it, we would be right down to the 40% quickly and actually cross over and be under and, and then after the five years, end up at 33%. So that's where the red line's underneath the blue line. The, so this is the last five years, current year and the next five years. And the next chart is where we are this year, where we expect to end this year, the 29.5 million. And then the big drop as we move it into capital for next year. It's basically slid this five years to the left, so we're looking at current and then 10 years out here. Within a couple of years, we're done funding all those capital projects, so it's mostly the operating. It's our revenues versus our expenditures for normal operations and there's a point in the last, in 2024 where with these assumptions, our expenditures exceed our revenues and, and our revenues will, they'll increase, but not as quickly as our expenditures. So you can see the gap would grow over the years. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Any specifics in these graphs here, about any of the assumptions he made with respect to expenditures?
For your projections? In terms of expenditures, are you assuming just an average rate of inflation or just historic?
It's a little more fine-tuned than that. I, like 3% for salaries, 5% for health and dental. The retirement expenditures, I just mirrored salaries, assuming they would, 3% increase for both of them. For purchase services, I use 2%. Supplies and materials, 2.5%. There's no changes to FTE in here. None, none at this point. See, on the revenue side, I assume 2% CPI, which with, and assuming $500,000 of new property every year, it really works out to 2.1% increase. So our revenues would be going up about 2% and our expenditures more like 3%. And that's where the gap comes from.
I'm going to take this brief moment to echo Rich's comments on thoroughness and it takes a little bit of time to read the chart, but thank you. This is thorough.
Thorough, exactly, easy to read and it's longer than you. From what we've seen before, so this is wonderful. Thank you.
Nice. Yeah. I'm going to suggest a lot more detail if anyone wants.
Thank you, Mr. Fitten. Well, this is a, an obvious next step in our process here, right? We've worked on discussing what we felt like the district needs in each specific location. We next received some budget numbers that our project manager put together and now we have that, sort of that final piece on those conceptual drawings, which is what is the impact on our reserves. This is certainly, for me, this is a very sobering picture, right? So as I look at this, you know, this board has had a board policy of, of protecting these reserves as long as we can for the unknown, for projects that may come up. And now we certainly have a picture of how quickly they can disappear. So I think now is sort of a, now is a good time for board discussion with respect to how everybody feels about this picture.
Can I add one more?
Sure.
Data points? I took the opportunity, if you want to call it that, to look at the, the long-range plan that the architect put together. plan that the architect put together almost exactly a year ago, and the capital improvements that they had, which are very similar in scope and concept to what we're talking about now, that had been estimated around eighteen point two million with various contingencies. The capital plans that we have from, estimated by Vistara, are at about twenty-four point four. We've already seen a six million dollar change in projections. And the reason I mention this is because there are a lot of unknowns in the cost projections, but invariably, they go up and they do not go down. That, that's pretty much the point I'm trying to make.
I think that's a good point, Joel. And although I have a certain degree of comfort in the way Vistara looked at all these projects, it didn't take an overall square footage assumption based on what the plans showed. They did a deeper dive, but still, that's an estimate based on a conceptual, right? And there are revealed conditions that we certainly don't know at this point.
It is, and I also have the same comfort level, I think, in Vistara's numbers. There's also a number of costs that aren't really captured in our capital numbers, such as there's going to be some incremental costs to moving the, the district office. The long-range plan also has eight million dollars, which, eight million dollars plus in just O and M costs. So there's, there's a lot of potential draws on our resources that are out there right now.
And that topic, how much have you budgeted, Mr. Fitten, for the eight million dollars in, in estimated?
We have a million dollars a year in that, to be able to take care of those things that come up.
And that's baked into your, into the school district budget that's not represented here, is that correct?
It's built into the operating expenditures.
The annual budget.
And that, that might be one of the reasons why we're spending more than's coming in. There's a, you know, there's a million dollars set aside every year for projects.
Right.
Repairs and more.
Okay.
You're saying it's not on this sheet?
Correct.
Right.
That's right.
But it's accounted for in the numbers.
It is, yes.
A million dollars a year is.
Yeah, every, almost every decision point, I, we were pretty conservative to make sure we had.
I think part of the point I'm trying to make, or want to emphasize is theoretically, trusting the long-range plan, we have eight million dollars in potential O and M expenses right now. Every year, there's going to be additional expenses that aren't documented in the long-range plan. So O and M is still a fairly significant potential expense.
To that point, I believe that the architect estimated the light roof project in her report, and that was, that was a project that was going to be done in the very same year as the report was issued. So this is a well-known project that we're very close to at, in the date of actual reconstruction. And if I recall, I think the estimate for that project was seven hundred thousand. In the report, the actual number was more like, was it one point one million?
Yes.
So we're off by fifty percent for a project that was more or less immediate in time.
That's right.
So that suggests that, to your point, Joel, that there's potential for that estimate of a million to be, to be very wrong, assuming that potential.
Well, it's that, plus the fact that, like any existing facility, there are current maintenance costs. The long-range plan indicates that our mechanicals are in good shape. The majority, the vast majority of all of our safety equipment is in good shape, but to keep it in good shape requires constant, or continuing, maintenance and expense. And that, part of that, part of Jim's estimate of a million dollars just goes to that. It doesn't cover, it doesn't automatically just make the O and M items that the architect
So I don't know about any, anybody else on the board, but when I, when I digest this information that we see here, it makes me want to, my reaction is to slow down and take a look at what's been proposed and try to determine what I think is essential in that proposal, and what, what may be delayed until we understand exactly what the positive impacts of the first couple of projects may be. I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
I think that your point is absolutely spot on. You know, as, as a board, our, one of our primary duties is to take the very, very long-term view, as I say. We, we have to look at the biggest picture and the longest time scales. The administration's looking at, you know, maybe one year, three years, possibly five. We have to look farther than that because this is, you know, that's part of our job as a board. What's the long-term trajectory? I think the other thing we have to look at is, this institution will have many needs over the next ten, or fifteen, or twenty years, many needs, not just capital needs. This is all about capital. Capital is, I don't want to say it's unimportant, but it's just one of many good uses of the money. We have to pay to attract good teachers. We have to pay, you know, good wages, and those wages go up every year. Same thing with administration. We have to attract good, good administrators to run the schools, and that's cost money and benefits costs go up and all the rest. Curricula, we, we've spent a lot of money over the last three years. Ms. Brownlow was, was involved in that heavily, in improving our curriculum. I very much doubt that, you know, those kind of expenditures are over. So even though we may have budgeted for some of that in here, I'm sure you have, there are many, many calls that our money, that the capital, so to spend the, what amounts to the vast majority of our reserves over the next ten years, simply on capital projects, seems to me quite risky, actually, to be honest.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the resulting fund balance. What proportion of our reserves we have remaining, and I think that number needs to be discussed again, so that we have security. I, I do want to pay people well in the future and, and keep the talent that we have, so...
I guess, I, I think there's, there's two questions that we fundamentally have. I mean, I, I agree that we need to be fiscally responsible, but I think there's two questions that we need to fundamentally ask as a board here. And I guess, first of all, what fund balance are we comfortable with? Because, I mean, I, I look at these numbers too, and I, it is sobering, but I guess when we've gone on the acquisition of property, we bought the additional property for Ames, and we bought the district office's property, I guess intuitively, I knew this was going to be an expected, I mean, we spent over a million dollar, I mean, on property. To expect us to spend a lot more, this is just the beginning, in the way I'm looking at it. And so I think we need to sort of, first of all, come to terms of what is, what fund balance do we want to have? And then I guess the other question that I'm, I'm going to raise, and probably to dismay of a lot of people, is we need to start talking about, we haven't, we haven't had, we haven't gone to the voters for over twenty years. And if we, we've talked about this for a year, for you-
Two thousand, three years, man. Two thousand, three is fifteen years, maybe.
Yeah, so, but we keep talking about how our expenses are, we keep seeing expenses increasing beyond our revenue, and so that's not sustainable. We all know that's not sustainable. And so the school districts unfortunately are the ones who are getting squeezed as state funding has dried up, and so we're going to have to address that at some point. And I'm thinking that, you know, I'm sure your numbers didn't include any sort of additional revenue coming in, other than what sort of we expect from the state or from additional-
Right, well, this is getting to the extreme of not asking for additional revenue.
Right. And I, I mean, I think at some point, we're going to have to ask that for additional revenue, because we can't sustain it, regardless of we do the capital project, regardless if we build anything or not, because it's not sustainable. We, our expenses are increasing faster than our revenue.
I, I share David's point to the extent that if we go to the community for additional money, it should only be for the things that we don't have control over, i.e. things like healthcare costs that are just essentially national in scope. I don't believe we should be looking at the community for funding a capital program that doesn't have sufficient priorities, which is, I think, what Rich suggested, is that we really need to look at this capital plan and prioritize it and find exactly what is our true need. And at the risk of putting myself out there, I think the true need is we do appropriate security at our buildings, and there are good ways to do that, and it doesn't need to be overly complicated, but it needs to be good. We know that Ames is, been on our radar screen for five years, maybe more, that it's got too many kids for what the floor plan is. And we now have, there's, and then Central with the, excuse me, the multipurpose room, and getting the kids off the stage at Hollywood. And I'm not necessarily saying that Central and Hollywood need to cost a lot, and they really shouldn't, and we should be challenging our architect to provide the most cost-effective solutions and not her desired results. But I think, to summarize, I think we've got secured front entrances, again, cost-effective, not flashy, and Ames should be our priority.
So before we, before we start prioritizing, I feel like we need to come to an agreement in some fashion on the number, like what, so our board policy says forty percent. Is that really where we live? Like, what's the comfort level?
To be honest with you, I, I don't look at it in terms of a percentage of what I'm comfortable with, or what the board should be comfortable with, of what the reserves are. I, I think of this as, what is the board, what should we be comfortable with in terms of the number of projects, the number of balls in the air at the same time that we want? I mean, you know, if you start going down the list, you know, yes, we've been talking about Ames for a long, long time. We've had a lot of proposals come back and forth. If you look at the initial proposal for, for Central, Central, that's a three and a half million dollar project. I, I can't imagine that, you know, before this year, we would have just, you know, approved a three point five million dollar project and thinking, yeah, that's no big deal. That's obviously a huge deal. And that's something that we've got to consider, what time, what attention, what focus we can provide to these projects. Because again, Ames is a huge project. There are going to be challenges. There are going to be things that we're going to have to deal with. Do we really want to stack a year of twenty, twenty twenty with how many projects in the air, how many things that can go wrong at the same time, how many things that can go over, the costs can go over at the same time?
I, I agree with you, Dan, but I think, getting to Linda's point, though, I think we need to come as a board, like what reserve are we comfortable with? Because right now-
In my mind, if, looking at in terms of the number of projects we're comfortable with at the same time, I mean, and we can, we can tally up what those projects will be, I don't know that we're going to be drastically approaching the forty percent policy level.
No, but I, I sometimes get the sense that, even though that's our policy level, I think that reserve is unintentionally a lot higher. And I would like us to sort of come to a decision, is this forty percent where we're comfortable with?
To that, to just clarify that even further, there's not only a question of what percentage, but, but also when, right? When, when, in this projection, do you reach that percentage? Because Mr. Fitten's numbers show that over time, that because our costs are going up and because we're spending more, that, that the fund balance as a percentage of operating expenditures decreases every single year, until I think his, his final projection in two thousand twenty-nine has fund balance, if we do everything that's on his list, at sixteen percent of, of operating expenditures, which, which is quite a, quite a small percentage, obviously.
If, if the question is on the table, are we looking to throw out a number, as the board want to determine a number that we're comfortable with? I honestly challenge the validity of that question. I mean, really, without any kind of hard, no, we have a ton of hard numbers in front of us, but if we're just going to come up with a percentage or a number, a round figure, I just don't see much value in that personally.
Unless we know our average rate of expense yearly and can figure out, really, it's about how long do we, do we want this to last? And you start deficit spending quite quickly in this chart.
And I guess, I guess this is my question, it's like, what is this fund balance? I mean, let me ask a, basically a philosophical question. What is this fund balance for? I mean, are we using it to cover our expenses that are going to exceed our revenue? I mean, are we basically covering the deficit? I mean, what are we trying to use this fund balance for? And, I mean, and so I guess that's a question too, is I'd like to ask, is that, are we using it, are we concerned about some unknowns that may or may not happen? Or are we, do I just hold on to this so that maybe in twenty years, when we finally exhaust the fund balance, or thirty years, when we finally exhaust this fund balance, that we have no, because of our rising expenses and decreasing revenue, that then we have to make the ultimate decision of like, okay, we have to go to the taxpayers then for more money? I mean-
I wouldn't say it's twenty years. I'd say it's a lot sooner than what it's rated.
Well, I mean, regardless, I guess, what are we trying, what are we trying to save this fund balance for? I mean, I-
Well, part of it's not, part of it is that if they already gave the money-
Right.
Years ago.
And I guess this is-
And I feel like, are we being careful with how it's being used?
And I think we're being very careful. I mean, we've been, we've, the board has been saying Ames for five years, trying to figure out what to do with Ames for five years.
Yeah, and I totally support prioritization of-
Right. I guess I'm, I'm very concerned. I'm, my concern is that we do Ames, and that then the other schools are going to be left behind, because we're still trying to figure out what to do and what's, I mean, I think we've spent so much time trying to figure out priorities and what's important. We need to move forward with this in, in a fiscally responsible way, but there is no doubt in my mind, when we started buying property for this, that this was going to be expensive. And we need, like I said, we need to be fiscally responsible about this, but this is going to, this isn't an expensive undertaking. We have five schools.
But the properties didn't necessarily involve every school at the same time.
No, it, it, it didn't, but at the same token, we embarked on this, this, like, embarked on buying property when it was available.
Yeah.
I mean, it was in our, it's in our mission, I mean, it's in our long-range plan to do this, and so I'm just thinking that we need to push, push forward with this. I'm not saying we go to the taxpayers today, because we, we have way too much money.
So that's, I think that you're totally right about what you just said, in a way, but there's, there's actually two parts to our, to our strategic plan that are here in contradiction, in blatant contradiction. And one, one part says that we're going to sort of work on space and facilities, and the other part is very clear that we are going to maintain the fiscal strength of the district. And here, we see those two things are not compatible in any sense whatsoever, and so we have to make some kind of choice here about which way we want to lean. Regarding going to the taxpayers, if we could go to the taxpayers and say, hey, we want to issue some bonds that will, that will have a taxable element, where you, you will pay for the bonds over time, over thirty years, or whatever, that would be the optimal way to fund these long-term capital projects. Totally optimal, makes total sense, but I also believe that the probability that the voters in two thousand nineteen, given the tax rates in Riverside, the current tax rates, given the condition of the state, given all of the things that are going on, the chance that that would happen is very, very, very low. So we could go out there and try it, but I just don't think it would happen.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not saying doing in twenty, twenty nineteen, I'm saying doing twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, after we've like done Ames, after we've shown that, you know, what we're trying to do. We can't do it with a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty percent fund balance. I mean, that's just, I wouldn't support that.
Dave, when you talk about the property purchases, which we have three now, two of them were adjacent to Ames for a very specific purpose, to, to be able to utilize to take care of issues at Ames, and then one was obviously the district office, again, to free up space at Central. We can address those, those concerns in projects right now, and then really understand what the positive impact is on all the other schools. And we, and we in fact had that conversation several-
And we, and we, in fact, had that conversation several times at a board level, that let's understand what problems we can solve district-wide by solving a problem at Ames, right? By creating space at Ames, alleviating pressure at Blythe, alleviating pressure at Central, pulling the district office out of Central so we can, so we can separate the lunch hours, so we don't have kids at Hauser eating lunch at 10:30. These were for very specific issues.
It was a very well-crafted, it took time for you guys to develop it, but I think at the end of the day, it does tie in the entire district into a sort of a very well-thought-through proposal. And I would include Hollywood in that, because part of the, a lot of the benefits from doing the construction at Ames are, to the other schools, are from the transfer of programs, the transfer of the preschool from Blythe to Ames. That frees up a ton of space at Blythe. Freeing up a ton of space at Blythe frees up a ton of space at Central by, you know, because we can start saying, we're not going to have four sections at Central, we'll only have three. But freeing up space at Central should free up space at Hollywood. For example, I know you've talked about the Ladsy program. The Ladsy program takes up one of Hollywood's eight classes. That's 12.5%. That's a lot. Just freeing up that class by transferring, just like we're doing everywhere else, that is a huge relative, you know, relative to the size of the schools, you know, equivalent to three classes at Central. So those are the benefits across the entire district. I'm not saying that needs to be everything, but I think keeping the focus on Ames, as you're saying, is absolutely sensible. I agree with Joel as well. I think, I'm not sure we should go for the full $3.5 million plan at Central, but I think it makes absolute sense, given that we purchased the Harlem property, and given that by making that district office into a multipurpose room for the Central kids, that allows Central and Hauser to decouple their schedules, so we don't have the kids eating lunch at 10:15 or 1 o'clock in the afternoon, and so Hauser's schedule can start later in the day and all these other things we talked about, that makes total sense. I don't know about the other pieces of that, you know, I don't know if we need to do the elevator in year one, or some of these other more expensive elements. We should, there's certain things we absolutely should do, I think, right off the bat, get kids off the stage at Hollywood. I mean, that's clear, we need to do that. But in terms of the overall, you know, the, you know, all of these things that are in here are, you know, in themselves, good things. No one could say, oh, this is a really dumb idea, or, I don't see any of that in here. But it's really a question now of what is affordable relative to our means and what the taxpayers will support. Because we can pretend that, okay, well, we'll spend all the money and then, you know, we'll get a referendum passed, but I, it's possible that maybe the people would go along with that. My suspicion is that they will not. If we just did this, we would put the district in a serious financial hole on the scale of a decade, and I don't know, you know, if that's where we want to go. So that's my, that's my take on the whole thing.
I'm going to echo what Jeff said. I think that, you know, even considering some type of a referendum at this point is a wasted effort. I really do. We've got funds here.
Right. I just want, we brought up referendum. I'm not supporting a referendum now, I'm not even suggesting we do one now, I'm saying it's going to have to be something that's going to become part of a discussion in the future with these capital projects. I want to make that really clear. I'm not supporting a referendum now, I'm not supporting a referendum next year. I want to make that very clear, because we have to start showing progress and momentum on what we're doing. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
And careful spending now will put that further off in the future. That's the only thing that I'd add.
Right. So the way, the reason I asked the question about where are we comfortable as a board is because I do think we flagged several needs of the district. I echo Dave's concerns that if we, I absolutely think, I don't think everything should happen all at once. I don't support that. I think we need to start somewhere and see how it moves. But I don't want to get you in a situation where we're just like, well, we're just not going to do that because we're, we hit a level, we don't want to spend anymore, so those needs are going to remain unmet.
Right, we need a budget.
So that's my concern.
We need a budget upfront and say, okay, here's the budget.
That's where I'm feeling like...
And of this budget, the highest priorities are explanatory.
Because then we, exactly, the highest priorities of this, and we're going to pair, maybe have to pare down our solutions to other problems. My concern is that if we don't come to a number that we're all pretty comfortable with, I mean, we, obviously, we have money that we can go and do Ames now. Like, I think that's a comfort level, I think. I just want to make sure we're not forgetting about the other needs, because they're on this list because they're needs of the district.
Perhaps a budget and a timeline.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
If we're not doing them all at once.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I think for purposes of this, putting it all at once makes perfect sense, but I don't, honestly, I don't even think we could get to do all of this at once if we wanted to, right? I mean, plus, I think there are things that are, like, Ames is the thing that starts the domino. You start Ames, and it's not like the plans at Blythe have to happen immediately because that's a domino that will go into the future, right? If the need is that we have to expand Blythe because, you know...
I think, and you, Linda, you're right in terms of there are identified needs, and a lot of the, the capital program improvements are good, are good in some ways, some of the improvements might be a little bit far-reaching, but I think one thing to keep in mind, and I think Sherry mentioned this, Jeff did too, is, Jeff didn't, our, the quality of our education is a, some component, and I would argue, a smaller component than everybody imagines is due to the facility. It's the teachers, it's the participation of the parents in their kids' education, it's, there's some soft things that are here that regardless of the amount of money we spend on any capital program, will not move a test score or child's performance one way or the other. And so I think that's something to keep in mind about capital improvements as well as, and it's echoing what everybody else has said, is what are the things we truly need to do to make a difference?
That's a good point. I mean, because I think there've been a ton of studies on that very point, where people have looked at, where's the biggest bang for the buck in terms of getting educational results? And capital expenditures are usually at the very bottom of the list, because they're very expensive and they have very little effect on student learning, which I think is...
And most school districts have no money, so...
Right, but even the ones they do, I mean, when you have, when you have a big capital project, you don't find that test scores are not really affected by that.
Right, and I mean, for me, I mean, and I could be the only one, I don't look at these improvements being in direct correlation to test scores. Like, that's, you know, that, well, yes, of course, you're hoping that it, you know, increases the educational experience, I'm not sure translating to test scores is my, top of my priority. I just want to make sure that, obviously, the facilities community created a bunch of concepts, and that's all they are, they're concepts at this point, that are identified, based on identified needs and, you know, issues that might be, you know, that are present in our district. And it doesn't mean we have to go with the exact concept, you know, and I know, nobody looks at this chart and thinks, yeah, let's go spend $22 million the next two years. I mean, that would be ridiculous. So I think what we just need, as we move through this, we need to keep all of this front of mind, that, making sure that we are resolving these needs, whether it means that we have to change a concept or change a solution, you know. I just don't, I don't want to, when we say prioritize, I don't want to prioritize and like, it just drops off and then, we're out of money.
So do we all agree that we should have a budget here? We should have a budget?
David...
Yeah, no, I guess I was going to echo what Linda said, is that I agree that, you know, it might not, facilities plans work might not be directly correlated to test scores, but I do sort of sometimes question if it really is, because especially in our situation now, where we have kids taking tests in hallways because of, they don't have room in the classroom, or because they're given like a special, they have like an IEP or they're taking tests outside. I mean, I sometimes, I don't, I understand what the studies say, but sometimes because our space issues are so severe here, I do wonder if that is the factor when we're putting kids in the classroom, I mean, out in the hall, or someplace that's not optimal for test-taking.
I have a request as a board member. I feel like, especially with Central and some of the others, we only have one concept that was presented, and I, it's not enough for me to really look at what's, what are our options? We had several for Ames, and I need more from the architect.
We've gone through several iterations for Ames, yes.
Absolutely, and for me, you know, we'd have to have many more discussions about...
Right, no, and I think that's exactly where we're at.
Because we were only offered one choice, and it's $3.5 million, and I'm going to need to see some more.
No, 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 I totally hear that. We did discuss a whole lot of other options, they were just way more expensive and they weren't even...
Well, then we need to see the opposite, maybe see it in between.
No, but I think, I think that's where we're at now, is, you know...
It's just been nice to have more than one plan for one school, it was kind of difficult to assess.
I think Linda addressed that, saying, we have some, we have some good concepts here. They need further refinement, maybe elements need to drop out of them to fit within a budgetary number right now.
Right, and that's what I would like to see.
I'm going to, at one point, I had suggested half of our fund balance being available for capital improvements, and I think I still hold to that, that that should be a number we are looking at initially, especially with Ames in mind. That's, I think that's where we should be.
You're saying about $15 million?
Which is about 15, and as we move forward, there are other options to make choices. There are, it's kind of like our strategic plan. It's, the strategic plan is a five-year plan. We actually should be thinking just as far out, 10 years out. Some of these elements might, the final touches do get finished out back then. There are going to be other boards after us with various agendas and various concerns that they want to address too, and we shouldn't be holding their hands, sorry, tying their hands...
Right.
And preventing what is perceived as a more important need. And in fact, the factors may change over time. They will change over time, and there will be new priorities. And, yes, and that's, you put better words to it than I can. That's absolutely right. So should we, should we continue this conversation to try and gain a consensus on perhaps an amount of fund balance, which will then drive the other conversation? Or should, should finance come up with a recommendation to discuss in the next meeting?
Well, it might be interesting to see where people are right now, and if there's some kind of reasonable consensus, we could, you know, see where we're at, or if not, then we could, you know...
I think we should take this opportunity to see where we're all at. I think, I mean, I think it's going to start the discussion, you know, get us along the right path, because we can't take, so we all, I think it's consensus, we all know that we need to do something at Ames soon. Like, that's the intention. So if that's the intention, we need to have this discussion, and so we can achieve that.
Oh, yeah, we certainly don't want to hinder the progress.
Right, because if we want to do, if we want to do Ames in 2020, then we need to, these are the conversations in, that I think we need, you know, like, I was saying earlier today, like, like, four years on the board, and this is probably like, the, you know, this is a big deal and it takes a lot. So I want to hear where everybody's at, because I'm not sure I know.
Can I just interject, just in terms of timing, so one of the things, the committee may be aware of this, but others may not, is that really, my understanding is to get to the idea of 2020 constructions, that we would need to make a decision in March or April, at sort of the, you know, the latest possible date about when we move forward. For example, if we were moving forward with Ames.
Right, so if we want to go into the schematic design stage.
Yeah, I think we can maintain that timeline, I don't see why, firstly, why we couldn't, but, I mean, that's just my opinion, but...
Yeah.
So why don't you start with your fund balance review?
Yeah, so for me, the 40% fund balance in the policy, I'm mostly comfortable with it, but I would probably up it a little bit. I would probably, you know, Bob Skolnik is like shaking his head at me.
The recommendation is 33%.
Thanks, Bob.
Good, you can take some time hanging around.
Anyway, I'm comfortable with the 40%, but I can also understand the concern with that, so, you know, 45, 50%, I, I'm good with the...
40% when? 10 years from, 10 years out?
I mean, looking, looking out.
We need a 10-year number, and whatever number would correspond to 40%, that's what we should have then, so we need to then back out on which we would spend, basically.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying?
Um...
You're not saying 10 years out?
I wasn't exactly saying 10 years out, I can understand why that's an important thing to look at, though. Yeah, so, so basically, though, I'm, I would support the board policy at 40%.
I, yeah, I would have a similar approach, looking out 10 years, and I would, but I would, I would go higher than the board policy, and let's say, you know, 60%. 60% of fund balance in 2029 will be 60%, and then whatever amount of money we could spend up till then, with all the projections that Mr. Fittin has made, that would be, that would be our number, so that'd be one...
60% in 29.
Yeah, we'll maintain 60% fund balance, basically.
Have you done the math on that yet?
I have, yes. So I think that would be more like...
I know, no, that's what, I want him to say the math, but I don't want to commit him to it.
More like $10 million, I think. That would be a $10 million figure we could spend on capital over the next, you know, period.
$10 million, all told.
All told, yes.
Who's next?
I will say that Rich had me when he talked about the finance committee coming back with recommendations. I, personally, I'm not terribly comfortable coming up with a ballpark number, because I just, I just don't see the value of it. I would be very interested in seeing Jeff's calculations and what he's...
You can just look at Mr. Fittin's right here, you can just take his number, you know, 16% is going to be $5 million, right? And 40% is 12.5 million, right? So in 2029, so 40% is 12.5, then 60% is going to be 19, and the difference between 19 and 5 is 14, and we're talking about spending 24, so 24 minus 14 leaves 10. So that's kind of, is that about right?
Mm-hmm.
But, Dan, that, I think the idea behind, I get your reluctance to set a number, because a number seems arbitrary.
Yeah.
Very, yeah.
But at the same time, if we don't set a number of budget, then we do run the risk of spending more on the early projects and running out of money, or some point running out of money for the later projects. So let's say we do Ames and we don't put a budget, and we spend $11 million on Ames or whatever number, and then we do Central, and then we say, oh, jeez, we're out of money, can't spend anymore, and then that's bad for the later projects, whatever the later projects might be. So I think that's the, is that not your argument that you guys are making for having some kind of budget numbers, that we can do, we can decide how much we want to spend on the first project, basically?
My argument for the $15 million comes from the fact that Ames is going to be somewhere between $11 and $12 million, and I think... As the conceptual design exists today.
Yes, which could be altered.
Let's, conceptual numbers, plus or minus 30%, I think that gives sufficient additional capital money to distribute appropriately to the other schools to get the priorities that I mentioned, which is reasonable security and to be able to create spaces that work for the kids. And an architect might not like it, but the kids would be very happy with it. And that's really, I, it wasn't just I'm coming up with 15...
Joel, when you're saying, you're thinking Ames is $11 million, plus or minus, are you assuming that we would adopt the Ames proposal as it currently exists, or if we changed the budget, we maybe would revise that proposal somehow?
For the most part, yes.
Yes, yes to what part of it?
To that we, the Ames option three, it needs, Ames option three doesn't have any risks associated with it until the architect finishes their schematic.
Right, right.
You can't, there's all kinds of changes, and there's a lot of needpicking that one can do as an architect and as a, and as a star can look at and say, here's things that are going to vastly increase the cost of this space and others that will make it a lot better. Ames continues, we've purchased property there, it continues to be the school of need for the north end of our district. We know that the north end of our district has a higher, fairly growing, or at least stable, student population, and the need was identified a while ago in terms of full three sections. So your number's 50%, is that what you said? It's 50%, but it's 50% based on, I think, some realistic projects. Dave, do you want to go?
15, I suppose, sure.
I guess I'm fully comfortable with 40% reserves, and I mean, I understand what Jeff's saying, but I guess to echo Linda's point, I don't want to embark on Ames and then, like, oh, we hit 40%, we can't do the other schools. I guess we have to do the other schools, and I just sort of want to stress that that has to be done, that we can't just do one school. It has to be all the schools.
So 40% out 2029, is that what you're saying?
I guess what I, what I am saying is, if hypothetically speaking, if we started the capital projects tomorrow, we went to 40%, I'd be totally fine with that. I guess we're gonna have to start talking about, because things are gonna change. I mean, if we're looking, I'm looking at 40% now, I'm looking at 40% 30 years from now. I guess that is sort of my threshold when we have to start.
So that would work out, I think that would work out to 40% in 2029 would be 12 million. We would have 5 million if we spent 24 million, so that would be $7 million different, so that would be, you're saying 17 million, I think, is what you're saying. Is that right? I'm not, Jeff, I'm not as fast as you, no numbers with you. I'm saying 40%.
Jeff says you owe him.
Remember to play cards with you.
Yeah.
Sherry, did you want to?
Yeah, I'm gonna choose a strange number. 55. Here's why. We haven't talked about play, and I'd like to reserve some money for play. Space.
Oh, I think that's in the plan.
Well, we haven't talked about gradation of surfaces, or how it's implemented with the parking lots. I think we need to save some money for that, and I didn't see it discussed very much, so. But I would like a healthy fund balance, because I don't like this trend, the way it looks later.
So Sherry's looking at my notes, apparently, because...
Again?
55% as well as what I'm...
Because you did not have that number. That's weird, okay.
55%, 10 years out.
Yeah, 10 years.
And I think that it's important that, you know, in my mind, the way this transpires then, is we all, we gain a consensus on what that number should be, and then the committee is challenged with designing towards that number, you know, and that becomes the next exercise. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
As long as we're moving on Ames.
Yeah.
Yeah. I haven't heard anybody.
Right, no, that feels like a consent...
I suppose my next question is, is everyone in support of some kind of Ames improvement within that? I mean, David's made it fairly clear, I think, if I'm to summarize, it's not only Ames.
And I guess my, my concern is that we're gonna do Ames. It seems like the way this board's leaning is we're gonna do Ames, we're gonna do Central, and then Hollywood and Blythe are gonna be sort of left out, and they're gonna be at the bottom of their budget, and it's like, oh, we only have now this much money, what can we do? I'm, I'm completely in support of moving forward on Ames. I'm just, I don't want us to be tying our hands and not being able to do the other schools, because, you know, Ames right now is budgeted at about 11, 11, 11, 12 million dollars, and then it turns out that it's gonna be 18 million or something because of whatever, we all know, construction costs increase. I just don't want to be tying our hands, and so as long as we keep that in mind and keep that focused as we move forward, because that, we have to do all the schools. I mean, that's, that's mine.
I think as we embark on the first project, I think the facilities committee needs to be tasked with making, you know, like, still looking globally at the entire district, you know, and not just shifting it to just Ames, and this is what we're doing.
No, and money should be set aside for the project we want to do, future budget section.
The only thing I would add is that, you know, to Ames, is that I do believe that a project at Central with respect to decoupling, as it's been said, from Hauser is important as well, because then we're, we're realizing the benefit of moving the district office out, right? It's an immediate impact. And then the only, the other aspect that I'd add to this is the security at all the schools.
I agree.
In my mind, that's what I see, are the immediate priorities.
But I guess if we're gonna be tack, and this is just, this is a question, I chirp to the architects, if we're gonna be tackling security at all the schools, and we're gonna be going in there, tearing out walls, or doing what have you, what's the economies of scale of doing other renovations at the same time? Because there is a, there is an economy, you know, we already have people in there.
I think it's dependent on what solutions are proposed.
Obviously, right, right. But I mean, I would like to know what those economies of scales are, because I don't want to have to be paying, I don't want to be taking this or, and this goes back to being fiscal responsibility, I don't want to be doing one project and spending all this money when we could have saved so much money if we did, if we did other things as well with it. So I would challenge the committee to come up, or more specifically, the architects, what are the economies of doing things at one?
Yes, I'd like to see some, you know, scaling or different solutions, something, a way to do it without it costing 3 million or 2 million dollars per. Because I think we can be creative there.
What do you, what do you think we should do as a next step? We kind of have some numbers. There are not, there's a wide range of numbers here, obviously. Rich, do you think the finance committee should take a look at the range that has been proposed and try to come up with a, then a more refined proposal, do you think? Would that make sense?
A recommendation for the next?
I actually would like to jump in. Did you comment on what your, what your number was?
Yeah, he said it was 60.
60, I'm sorry, I did not.
At the...
Do you want to see his...
No, that's okay.
Does that make sense, though, to have, like, the finance committee kind of look at the numbers that people have thrown out, and sort of trying to come up with a suggestion for the next time, so we can then...
To keep it moving.
Keep it moving, is that, rather than trying to figure out an exact number right now?
No, I just want, I'm glad to hear where everybody's at.
What I'm thinking is that maybe we have a range of numbers that have been thrown out, different people have different opinions, and what, I was gonna just sort of, like, to follow up on Rich's point, which is maybe the finance committee could kind of look at this a little bit over the next couple of weeks, and try to say, okay, here's what the range is, here might be a reasonable number where everyone is more or less comfortable, and then use that as our initial budget for the projects, and then prioritize in that context? Does that...
That would be appropriate, and take those, take that range and apply it to the graph we see up there, and see what, what does that leave us as a high and low end?
Right.
To present options, so the finance committee could present options?
Sure.
Options and a scale of what we're talking about, and, you know, if, maybe an extra 5% one way or the other really ends up looking really good...
Right.
In terms of that long-range budget, or long-range projection. It's not a budget, it's a projection. Budgets are firmer than some of the numbers we're talking about.
And I think when we talk about the future, it's not just facilities money. I mean, I'd like to maintain the program that we have, and to have money to maintain the staff that we have, and those are considerations. I mean, those all change every few years with expense, and I would never want to hinder those, so that's why I think the budget is really important. It may seem like you're saving too much, but I think I want, I would never want to get rid of the programs that we have, so.
Really, quick question. When we're talking 10 years out, so you're saying you want to be at a 60% fund balance in 10 years?
Right.
What, just, can you just explain to me your reasoning on why 60 in 10 years?
Well, 60, that's, that's a little bit arbitrary, but, but what I'm thinking about is, is that there are many uncertainties. Like, for example, the North Riverside Mall, we know that there's a number of the stores there are not doing well. We know that. And I would expect that, you know, maybe, who knows, they might go out of business, or they might appeal their taxes, and those taxes are basically, you know, put on the rest of the district. So there are many things that could happen over the next, you know, decade that could affect our district's financial future, and so I, in my view, the bigger the cushion we have, the more able we will be in 10 years' time to serve the kids that are coming in the doors then. I mean, it's not gonna affect the kids today, but 10 years from now.
Yeah, I completely understand that, a very fair reason. I just want to make sure, like, as a property tax payer myself, like, I want to make sure that the money that I'm paying in is going towards the students who are in the school now, too. So for, for me, I don't want to feel, and I, like a savings account, you know? Like, I want to make sure that we are using the money that, that the current community is giving, you know, not giving us, is required to pay, to be, you know, like, if there are real needs in our district, I want to make sure that we're using the money that the community is giving.
Right, there's a balance there. You have to find the right balance, and you can't be, it can't be let spend everything, and then we have zero. It can't be, well, it's not forward at all.
No, of course, of course not.
There's somewhere in between there that we have to...
Right, right, right.
It's gonna be empty, this chart.
Right, no, I understand all that, I understand.
Right, so that's, I think, what we're talking about, so where's the right balance?
Right, yeah, I was just curious where your number 60 was coming from, because in my perspective, just, the way I'm thinking seems a little high.
Yeah, it's far less than we have now, but it's, it's more than the 40% that, you know, we have as a policy, but, you know, so I don't think it's necessarily set in stone. If someone came back and said, no, it should be 55, I mean, okay, that's, I'm not gonna, you know...
This is currently 31, 120, is that correct?
120% is our current fund balance?
Right, yeah.
Yes.
That's right.
Jeff brought up something that I asked Mr. Fitton to look at. It's a, it's a more long-term project, but, and in terms of their, sorry, property tax revenues, the district has a certain budget that we receive from the community, and that's distributed across all the properties of the district. And I asked Mr. Fitton to look in conjunction with the Township of Susser, there are a large number of properties that have recently gone off the rolls, and we're part of that. We've bought Harlem, we have our two houses, St. Mary's is about to buy PNC. All of 60%, 70%, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, Bob could too, of Riverside Lawn is gone to Forest Preserve. Payless is about to go out under. Sears probably is in trouble. Carson's is in trouble, obviously, they're gone. So all that money that those properties were paying last year, and the year before, is now going to be redistributed across the rest of the community. And so we are in inadvertent, not really of our own, making tax increase that people will see. It's, I haven't done the numbers, and, but it's there, and it is going to happen. And I think that's some, that's one of those, sorry, that's one of those inadvertent things that can just happen without us having control.
Right, tell me, tell me, I just have a question, because I'm trying to figure out with St. Mary's versus us, but talk about the difference between the monies that are accrued.
Both. PNC used to pay property taxes.
Yes, but I mean, in comparison, the school district, we are the ones that would take it in, so it's slightly different then.
How do you, I'm lost.
Well, we took, we took three properties off the tax rolls.
Yes, I realize that, I realize that, but I feel like, I don't know, I feel like it's a slightly different situation than St. Mary's.
Well, I think it's, I mean, the, the request that we put out, the amount that we're requesting every year doesn't change depending, you know...
No, I realize that.
The number of properties to buy by.
We're not gonna have another Costco, I get it. We wish, but...
But St. Mary's, I think, is the same, because they produce the property, and they're taking a property off the tax.
Well, that's true, they're not a property, yeah, I forgot about their, yeah, they don't pay property taxes.
It's, it's, Sherry, it's, sorry, it's very common for commercial properties, when they go vacant or dark, whatever you want to call, Carson's and Payless, and that they will ask for reduction in their property taxes.
Right, right.
It's just, it's good business for them.
Yeah, I guess, I, the only point I wanted to make is while they absolutely need to look about the future and be very physically responsible, I just want to make sure that we're not overly cautious and we're forgetting about the present. That's my only concern.
Right, I agree. And this is the first conversation where we've dug into the details, so maybe over time, we will have further conversations. We'll see...
Yeah, I know that.
What the projections look like. We'll see what the implications would be for the projects. We'll say, you know what, we need to make an adjustment, one way or the other, and that, you know, we can go from there, is that...
No, I'm, I'm glad we've actually gotten to the point where we can have the conversation with real context behind it, so. I think we were talking about this two years ago, when you guys were first on the board, and we haven't, so.
Well, and Linda, this, with the work that the facilities committee did, it basically made it possible to have this discussion, and putting, much as I don't like to admit it, until you have a concept plan, you have no idea what potential costs are gonna look like. The costs come after the picture is there, so.
I think, I think we've done a really good job of honing in on what the needs of the district are, and whether we go with a concept that's been designed or not, we, you know, within the budget, we decide, we'll get solutions. So I think, I think, I think we're to this thought. For me, I'm excited, four years in, this is, this is where we need to be. Let's get moving.
Rather than Linda being excited, is there anything anyone else...
Don't you want to stay?
Wants to be, do. Anything anyone else wants to share? Any feelings?
I'm a very emotional person, so I can't contain it.
The one feeling item, I'll throw this in there, is, could have gone with the facilities, um, agenda. No, no fear.
It's like a big, a big mind statement.
We've gotten a few emails from the community that they were concerned about security, and I think the board's intent is not that any choice of where an office is, or is not, we're going to somehow deprive the schools of their appropriate security.
Right.
Whatever location it ends up at, at whichever school we're at, whether it be Hollywood, or Central, or Blythe, or Ames, we will provide equivalent security.
Yeah.
And security is not always about just glass, and, there's a lot of human factors that go into it.
That's a very good point, Joel. I think that's a very good point to mention.
That's it.
Thanks, Joel.
Any other, is that it, Rich, for you, or?
Back to you, Jeff.
Any other, okay, any, any other business that anyone would like to discuss?
We did table the discussion on the construction project.
That's a good point, yes, let's go back to that. It would seem to me that since we, I think his contract specifies for simultaneous projects occurring, and it sounds like no one is in favor of that. Is that correct? So that the contract has to go back for modification? Is that, is that true?
I think that would be true, because his rates are tied to that.
Rates are tied to that, so, maybe at the same time, the finance committee talks about projections, we'd also revisit that, or?
So, I might suggest that we could, we could enter into a basic agreement with Vistar, and adapt addendums to it based on needs at the time. That may be more efficient than what we're considering here.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Because I don't think next week, we're gonna have a clear, like, and I want to make sure that we...
So he's actually getting to work, right?
Enter into that agreement, and...
And clearly, Vistar is doing work for us now, so.
How would you structure a base agreement like that? How would that just be time of service, or that would be a certain, how would you do that in practice? Is that...
Well, I think the, the general structure of his agreement as it exists right now is very good. It just needs to take out specifics for this project.
Okay.
And those would be adapted in each addendum.
Got it.
So just a letter addendum.
It's not really any different, yes, I agree with you, and I, it's not much different than what we do with DLA right now.
That's right.
Where we have memorandums of agreement or understanding that address whatever's in front of us right now.
Right. Any other, that was a good catch there, Dan. Any other, any other business that we have not discussed? If not, is there any public comment? If there is no public comment, then the next meeting is March 6, is Committee of the Whole at 7:00 PM in Hollywood. March 20, regular business, 7:00 PM at Hauser Learning. April 3, Committee of the Whole, 7:00 PM at Ames School. And April 17, regular business meeting, 7:00 at, 7:00 PM at Hauser. So, it's all that we can talk about.